We're calling to order the special meeting of the Los Alamitos City Council for Monday, December 4th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz-Moto.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Haskelbrink.
Here. And if you can join me at standing with the Pledge of Allegiance and Chief Eric Nunez will be leading us.
(inaudible) honoring the greatest nation in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item tonight on the agenda that's to interview the applicants for the city council vacancy. And I will, at this point, open it up for public comments. Do we have any? Okay, seeing none. The way we're going to do this is we're going to call each candidate up for an interview. It's going to go alphabetically. They'll be allowed to do an opening statement and then we have some questions to ask them. After all four have been interviewed, we're going to do an indication of support and then based on those results, we'll do the motion and second and hopefully be able to appoint tonight. So, we will start with Pete Carvahal. Come on up.
You know, we could have done reverse alphabetical order.
Yeah, it's okay.[92.42][92.42](laughing) So, go ahead and you can start with an opening statement and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, city staff. I want to start by just saying that, once again, I'm honored and humbled to have the opportunity to stand before you, an application of an open position. You all know me as Pete Carvahal. My real name is Pedro, so for those out on TV that don't know me. I've lived in the city since 2000. It has to do a little bit of an introduction as to my involvement in the community. I've actually been involved in the community since the mid-'90s when my kids were in school here. Started out as a coach in youth sports. Coached both in LAYB for my son, Los Alamitos Girl Softball for a couple of years for my daughter, but my passion became AYSO. And through AYSO, I've coached and been a board member for over 20 years. I would say especially in the last eight years, I served as the master coach for the U5 program. And in that program, I would say in the 78 years that I ran that program, we probably ran about 1,000 kids through it and we probably trained over 200 coaches in the process. I've always talked about my involvement in the community being about the kids and simply and I usually say it comes from a selfish point of view because I've always felt that the fact that Los Alamitos is such a great place to raise your kids and to do things for the kids and to serve the children of the community actually always helps us from a real estate proposition, right? And it keeps our property values high and basically just takes care of everything. I wanted to say that, you know, I've known all of you for some time and a few of you at one time or another have discussed with me the possibility of running. And usually when I've been asked about that, I've discussed about being either too busy with work commitments or AYSO commitments. AYSO is a very big time commitment. AYSO I've retired from about two years ago, so I'm no longer serving them other than an advisory council and going to a barbecue from time to time. And I've been entering into my second, going on my third year with California Pizza Kitchen. They are located in Playa Vista, but going into my third year, my schedule is such that it allows me the flexibility to, for example, today, leave work early to take care of things here in Orange County. And any day that I want to work from home or need to work from home, typically I could do that. I do travel from time to time, but very rarely. So, the time commitment is there. You know, having given up a bit on AYSO or retired from AYSO and being at a place in my job, if you know me from a family point of view, next year will be my 30th anniversary. My kids are grown up. Two children, they're both proud products of the Los Alamitos School District and our UC system. So, they're grown up. They probably prefer not to have me as involved in their life right now (laugh) as I used to be. And so, that does give me the time. And like I said, I just take it as an honor to be able to serve with you. I do want to mention the other big passion and the other involvement that I've had where it actually speaks directly to this position has been my involvement with the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission. I was appointed, I want to say back in 2002, so I'm going on my 15th year on that commission. You know, I remember when I joined, there were people on that commission that had been on a long time and I was the new guy. And I looked at them, you know, people like Beth Pyburn and thought, "Oh, my God, they have all the tribal history, talk tribal knowledge and history of the city of Los Alamitos and now I'm that guy on the commission." I've been appointed chair, I believe this is my fourth term as the chair, that I'm finishing up this year. And I've been appointed by all iterations of the council. And usually, pretty unanimously, there may have been one or two votes against me at some point, but normally when I apply for that. Again, through that interaction, you know, I've been able to deal with, you know, look at the way that the city deals with our partnerships within the communities, not only with Seal Beach and Rossmore, but also the school district, the youth groups, and then our great Parks and Recreation staff and even the base. We do a lot of interaction with events on the base and have seen the evolution of those relationships strengthen, wane, and strengthen again. And so, it's given me a pretty good perspective on the business of the city, not only from that standpoint, from the standpoint of involvement, but even from the budgetary standpoints. I've been around long enough where I remember the race on the base would give a, send $3,000 to the general fund back in the day and now, you know, it actually feeds over $100,000 into the general fund. I'm not claiming any recognition for that. It's all the brilliant city staff that's done all of that. But I know that, you know, in a small part, you know, the commission has played, has contributed to the success of a lot of those programs. So, that's my introduction. That's my involvement within the community and, again, I'm just thankful to be here.
Thank you. All right, we'll start. Richard, do you want to start with the question?
Sure. What do you believe is Los Alamitos' biggest issue?
You know, I think the elephant in the room with, within doing the business of the city has been our liability, the pension liability that's being addressed currently. I think it's been there for years. I think it will continue to be there. I think even if we go forward with the liability bond or the obligation bond that we're talking about and move forward with that, it's still dependent a lot on the fluctuations of the market. And because of that, it will be somewhat cast a shadow on everything else that we do revolving around, even some of the other items we're going to discuss today, strategy, you know, investments, everything else. I believe that that bond obligation or the pension obligation is probably the biggest issue because if we don't have a good handle on that, it really won't allow us to work on all of the other day-to-day issues, you know, street sweeping, garbage pickup, traffic issues. We obviously need to keep a big eye on that and it will continue to be, you know, something that we have to monitor and, you know, look at moving forward.
Thank you. What do you think are the best things about Los Alamitos?
That's actually a (laugh) a real easy one. Like I said, it's, in my opinion, when we chose to move here, I was working for Carl's Jr. at the time and I had a service route. I was taking care of their computer and POS systems and I used to drive around and one of my stores was the one here in Seal Beach. And I remember I would take lunch and I, you know, after a while, you're sick of sitting in the restaurant and so you would, you know, grab your burger and drive around the neighborhood wherever you're at. And I remember driving around Rossmore in the Highlands and just thinking, "Gosh, this, it's ideal." It really was. But what really makes it ideal, other than just the external appearance of it, is that Los Alamitos is really a city that understands the sense of community. It really understands a sense of community. And by that, I mean, you know, being able to walk down the street in my neighborhood in the Highlands or, and I'm sure it's true in all the neighborhoods, and walk your dog and know your neighbors and be able to stop and chat and, you know, walk down to the park and see Cub Scouts at the park, you know, going through, you know, one of their bridge ceremonies. It, I'm thankful every day that I have the opportunity to live in a town like this. I've talked about where I grew up in San Gabriel and the San Gabriel Valley. It was very much like that as a kid and it's changed a lot. The demographics have changed, the priorities of the city government have changed in a way that it's really not a town that I recognize. But I could tell you that as much as Los Alamitos has changed at the time I've been here, it's still that same town. You know, we still know our neighbors. You know, we still talk to them. We still keep an eye on each other. We still pick each other's mail up. You know, if I get my neighbor's package by mistake, I walk it over and talk to them. It's that sense of community that really makes Los Alamitos a special thing. I'll tell you guys a story. When I was coaching U5, our program here in Los Alamitos was so good that they would bring in commissioners from other regions to see how we ran our U5 program. And one day I was driving, a parent from, or a commissioner from Linwood around Los Alamitos and we were hitting some of the fields in the, in Rossmore and some of the fields over at McCalliff. And she had her son with her and her son looked over and he said, "Coach Pete," he said, "It's a beautiful place you live in." And I said, "Oh, thank you." And I'm thinking, "Well, you know, it's a nice neighborhood. It's not Beverly Hills or anything." He goes, "It's just so clean and it looks so safe." And I thought, "These are the things that we take for granted every day. We take for granted that our streets are clean. We take for granted that our streets are safe. We take that for granted, but for kids that don't live here, it's really special." And I really appreciate that. And I think that sense of community that we have, that expectation that we live in a clean, safe place, that's what makes Los Alamitos so great.
Great. First of all, I just want to thank you for all your service in the community. You definitely have contributed a lot and we really, really appreciate all the time that you've put in.
Thank you.
So, thank you. What's your position on the fiscal responsibility and budget surplus?
I (laugh) I could go on a long time about that, but I, obviously, I think that the budget surplus itself, it's good that we have it. It's good that, as a council, you inherited it from councils in the past that were very fiscally responsible and we've allowed it, we've maintained it, we've kept it. Like I said, I believe that the pension liability, that obligation that we're going to have moving forward is really based on market fluctuations and it could go either way. And I think it's hugely important that we continue to maintain that surplus, right? At the same time, I think as a council, you know, we, as a council, we as the leaders in the community have to have the courage also to make some decisions sometimes when it comes to investments in the community. I could go back to the Laurel Park purchase from the school district, since I believe in like 2006, 2007. That was a big investment, but in the long run, it was an investment in that same thing that I talked about, that sense of community, right? Being able to invest in public space for our city. Because if we didn't buy it, who knows what could have gone in there? I mean, I know what it was zoned for and I know everything else, but I think that the council at that time, having the courage to make that investment for the city, really will pay dividends down the road for us. And so, so basically, very fiscally conservative from the standpoint of maintaining that, but also looking at those investment opportunities when they do come to have the courage to make them.
Thank you.
And just before I ask the last prepared question for my colleagues, we'll come back around and do some follow-up questions. We just need to make sure that we ask the same questions to all four candidates, so it's even-steven.
Sure.
What are your long-term strategies and ideas for the city?
You know, in my capacity as, as an executive in the restaurant industry now, I'm no longer driving around in a van servicing cash registers. I'm actually responsible for an IT strategy with a capital expenditure budget of this last year, I believe was about $3 million and general expenses and at least equal to that. And so, typically, the times I've gone into a new position where I'm going to have the leadership position to create a long-term strategy, it's, there's an assessment period, right? You spend two to three months, you know, looking at the needs of the company, the business needs and everything else before you sit down and start putting together a strategy that is in line with the business plan of the leadership of the company. For the city, it's actually a little bit different because I think I have a pretty good idea of kind of what the needs of the city are to a certain extent. I do not have the privilege of knowing what some of the challenges that you guys face, especially, you know, behind closed doors a lot of times. But I would say that my, I think the long-term strategy for the city is twofold, is one, is to really look at innovative ways on two fronts. And I hate to kind of go back to the business model of it, but a lot of times it, you know, it does apply. You know, one of my, one of my old mentors told me one time, "Pete, as an executive in the IT side of things, you have three main responsibilities and all your strategy should revolve around that. It's either you're making the company money, you're saving the company money, or you're keeping them out of court." And a lot of those strategies relate back to what we're talking about. You know, we need to look at innovative ways to save the city money. We need to find innovative ways to do that. We need to look at innovative ways when we do spend the money on how we invest that money, right? How we make the money, how we save the money, if it comes to, you know, figuring out new ways to bring in those resources or those revenues, right? And then obviously, from a compliance standpoint, is being innovative in ways that, you know, we keep ourselves out of court. You know, as much as we probably like our city attorneys, we probably don't want to spend as much money as we do with them. So, the long-term strategies are search out innovative ways to do those things. But I think the other long-term strategy is to leverage and strengthen our collaboration as a city with our community partners. And by our community partners, I'm thinking about the school district. I'm thinking about our sister cities, our co-cities, you know, as much as they may like us or not like us, or we like them or do not like them, we are intertwined with Rossmore and Seal Beach. And those, you know, that community and that city are our community partners and trying to find ways to leverage should strengthen those partnerships. Our partnerships on the base. You know, I talked about, I know that, you know, Troy served and, you know, he's going to be terminated at the end of next year, but I think that that would add some value to have somebody on the city council that still has that military background, that could speak to issues on the base, that understand, you know, military decorum and all of the things that go along with having served, right? And that's one of the proudest things that I've had is having served in the Air Force for six years, active duty, five of those overseas. I think that perspective helps strengthen that bond. And so, like I said, I think, I think it's, the long-term strategy is just that, is finding ways to continue to improve and be that city that we all want to be, we all want to continue to be, to take advantage and to protect what we've inherited from the past councils, that great budget, that fiscal conservancy, but also look towards the future and find new ways to partner and improve the city.
Okay. Back around and start with you, Richard.
Okay. Excluding the pension, which we have relatively little control over, what's the biggest problem with the city and what magic wand do you wave to solve it?
Hold on, let me see if I brought it with me. I think a lot of the, I think going along with that, right, is our tax base, right? Our sales tax basis. You know, being able to work with our business people in the community to find ways to help them is important because anything that we do, again, like I said, you know, improving on the parks helps the kids, helps all of us. Improving on our local businesses, you know, helping figure out ways to, you know, ease the traffic into their businesses, for example, or figure out ways to work with them to help them be more profitable, more successful will help us in the long run, long-term from a sales tax perspective, right? I think traffic, if you spend any time at all on the, on the neighborhood websites, you'll see that traffic is probably the biggest challenge that we face. You know, we're one of the most traffic intersections in Orange County, if not the most traffic intersection of Orange County. And I think that there's going to be some opportunities. I think when we think about technologies in the future and how we interact with, you know, self-driving cars and how we leverage our streets to take care of the, you know, innovation that's going to occur in the auto market down the road to ease our traffic, I think there's going to be some great opportunities to do that. But I think traffic is probably one of the biggest challenges. I believe that for a while, we were struggling a bit with our relationship with the base. I think that, you know, since the coming in of the new commander, I think Colonel Bynne, I believe, is coming in, it's strengthened and it's been better, but, you know, obviously something we need to keep an eye on, right? It's a partnership that's really vital to us as a community and we need to keep that. But I would say those are the biggest issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Pete, thanks for being here. So, it's my question for you and the last same for all. Have you ever run for a public office before? And if yes, what were the offices, office, and how many times have you run?
I have not run for a public office before.
Okay.
Okay.[1183.42][1183.42](laughing)
Yeah, I know.
Understand.
So, Pete, I've got, I've got two questions. I'm going to do it fairly quickly. The first part, when you talked about the pension obligation bonds and the finance, you know, a big thing that I know I've been focused on since I'm getting ready to leave is to keep the city financially sound. The pension bonds have been something that have been discussed, but also what we've been hearing about people talking about increasing sales tax. I thought where you were going there with, was your point on sales tax and how important the business community is. Specifically, from your perspective, would you support a 1% sales tax on the city?
I don't, I don't know if I would go with the sales tax because I believe that might go counter to our ability to help those local businesses. I think we have such small, such a small retail footprint that anything we do that could negatively or adversely affect that would be a huge concern of mine. I would really have to see the statistics on that, so I'd be really concerned with that. I think there might be some other opportunities from a revenue standpoint as it might come to, you know, utilities tax or the hotel tax after the hotel comes in or, or something of that nature, if we're looking at ways to increase revenue for the city. I would be really hesitant to do anything that would be counter to the local businesses.
Okay, great. And then, let's do a little bit of a historical question. 2009, we had a big controversy in the city and having to do with a previous mayor and some allegations of racism. With all of your history in the community, one of the things that really was surprising to me was during that, when the city was in total chaos, you came up and spoke saying that, you know, just like you did tonight, you qualified, your name was Pedro, not Pete, and you thought that there might be an issue in the community, in our community. And I'm just curious, now that so much time has went by, if you still feel that way? And if you do, what would you do different if you were giving us advice on how to take care of that?
Honestly, looking back on that time and that incident specifically, I remember two things specifically. I remember upstanding here and speaking to that mayor and having known his history and having known his commitment, having known his love for the city and his service to the city, what the challenges that he was facing based on that. I remember that really clearly and I remember wanting to come out and say, you know, as much as I respect and love that, that commitment to the city, I was very concerned about the incident and what it did to our community. From a, from a public relations standpoint, I've always prided myself since moving here on being a citizen of Los Alamitos. I've always prided myself on saying that my kids are products of the Los Alamitos School District. And I felt that, that in and above itself was something that needed to be protected and honored and cherished. And I feel that the way that the council handled it at the time was very good. And I remember, you know, having the utmost respect for the mayor who stepped down at the time based on that. I, you know, like I said, I took that somewhat personally because subjects of racism are always kind of tend to be that. There's always many ways to look at any given situation. But I look at a city that has a Latino chief of police. I look at a city whose city staff has embraced people of all colors, all creeds, all religions, you know. I look at our council, you know, and I've seen, you know, women, I've seen men, I've seen people of all races up on the commission, on the, on the council. And I don't believe that inherently we have that issue. I believe it's an issue we need to be aware of. I believe it's an issue that, that we should acknowledge when it comes, comes about, but I believe it was also kind of an issue that was very much blown out of proportion at that time. I would say in the current political environment, it might not have even raised an eyebrow, but I do know that back then, it was a very big deal. And I thank you for bringing it up because I do remember taking that very personally, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'll just follow up with one last question. It might be an obvious answer, but this position that we're pointing to tonight would be good through December of next year, up for reelection in November of 2018. Are you willing to run at this point, obviously?
Yeah.
We just want to qualify that you're not a one-and-done.
No, I, I appreciate that. No, we, some of us sat in the meeting that day and, and heard the discussion and I think it was, it was, it was a great discussion. I think the points were well-made. I, yes, I guess the simple answer would be yes. I understand that as I stand here today, in my position today, my job today, that I would run, run again in a year.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Anything?
No, I, again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Our next applicant is Mark Chirco.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak here. I'm honored. And I'll introduce myself. My name is Mark Chirco and I'm a proud resident of Rossmore Highlands with my wife and my two young sons. I wasn't born in Los Alamitos, but I got here as soon as I could.[1556.51][1556.51](laughing) I've been honored to be on the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission for the last year and I've also been on AYSO as a coach for the last two years as well. My wife's office is a financial sponsor of the AYSO as well. And serving in the community is something my parents instilled in me early and I've been serving in different capacities since I was in college. At UCLA, I volunteered for the District Attorney's Victim Witness Assistance Program. In law school, I participated in a legal clinic, helping folks who did not have adequate legal representation. And when I was a newly-minted attorney, I helped represent a man who had been persecuted in a foreign country because of his Christian beliefs. I currently volunteer through my employer at Children's Hospital of Orange County, where I help parents of severely disabled children secure guardianships or conservatorships that are necessary to help ensure that they receive adequate care once they turn 18 years old. I've been a practicing attorney for more than 13 years and I'm currently senior counsel at Hyundai Motor America in Fountain Valley. And my wife and I own a dental practice here in Los Alamitos. Her commute is much better than my commute. She also volunteers at Rossmore Elementary School on her days off. We love the city. We never take anything in the city for granted and we're really excited to be involved in the city and make this city our long-term home. She says it's a little morbid of me, but I always joke around that I plan on dying in our home. So, it is morbid, I'll admit that, but, but we really do love it here.
Great, thank you. Richard.
What do you believe is Los Alamitos' biggest issue?
Sure. I hope it's okay. I wrote down three issues, but I won't take too much time on them. So, Los Alamitos is an incredible city, but like any city, there are some issues. And the first big issue I see here is the inherent tension in the city between keeping the city's small-town character and the community that we all love here, but also dealing with, you know, the financial constraints that we have and the lack of sufficient revenue sometimes to pay for all the good things that people in our city want and deserve, frankly. So, there's always that tension, you know? We want some smart growth, but at the same time, we don't want to increase traffic and congestion because that affects our way of life here. So, we, you know, we're really careful about that and I know the council's done a great job dealing with this issue over the last few years. The second one I have listed here is underfunded pension obligations. You know, we owe millions of dollars. There's no way around this and there's no easy solution. I'm not going to claim I have some magic bullet here. If I, if I did, I'd probably be a very wealthy consultant to cities. But, you know, this, these issues can be solved. The council's done a good job planning for our future, addressing the pension obligations. More will need to be done later, probably some difficult decisions will need to be made on that front, but I'm confident that can be addressed. And then finally, one really big issue I see in our city and in so many cities is the imposition of these mandates from Sacramento, unfunded mandates, like the organic waste mandate, SB 35, AB 109, of course, affecting our, our safety, the recent accessory dwelling units issue that you all have talked about. And, you know, it's unfortunate, people from different places than our home that have probably never stepped foot in Los Alamitos can pass down these mandates and, and, you know, we have to deal with them and we will deal with them and we'll comply with the laws that they passed down. But that's a big issue that we deal with here. And so, we walk a fine line complying with the law, but trying to preserve our, our community and the way things are here. And that's, that's a line I walk every day at work. And that's, that's a line I walk every day at work at Hyundai Motor America. I practice employment law, and you can just imagine what kind of laws are coming out of Sacramento as it relates to employment of, of folks in California. And so, you know, I, I deal with that, and, and that experience I think will be helpful to the council in walking that line as well. Those are the three main issues.
Thank you.
So what do you, oh, sorry. What do you think are the best things about Los Alamos?
Sure. I'm also going to talk about the city character. It definitely has a small, old-town feel. You know, we don't have a lot of the revenue that other bigger cities have, so we don't have a lot of those options. But we also don't have a lot of the problems that bigger cities have. We don't have a lot of the serious crime big cities have and the blight that other big cities have. People know Los Alamos, and it has a great reputation. When I tell people at work that I, that I live in Los Alamos, people are impressed. You know, of course, they always talk about the schools, but they talk about what a nice city it is, what nice people live there. And so, you know, that's a really big deal. I've lived other places, and so I can appreciate the uniqueness of the city. It really is, you know, part of it is that it's just a small city, and there's benefits, great benefits to that. You know, I go to the parks, businesses, community events. People know each other all over this city, and it's great. People's kids play sports together, they volunteer together, and people have a real passion. We're in the middle of this huge concrete jungle here of Southern California, and yet we're a little, small-town oasis here. And I'd like to do whatever I can to help to preserve that for future generations. Of course, my kids are at the, at the front of my mind with that. One thing that comes to mind for me when talking about the sense of community and the involvement of people in the city is, is something that took place in my neighborhood a couple of years ago. Somebody on my street in the Highlands wanted to open a drug rehabilitation center. And, you know, we, we looked into it, and I understand the city attorney looked into it, and we were told, well, it's the law and there's nothing really that can be done about this. And so some folks were deflated, but the community got together and they had a meeting at Orville Lewis Park. Then Mayor Murphy was, was there in attendance. And, and the residents were really vocal. They came out in huge numbers. And the gentleman who was going to open that facility, I respect him for showing up. He probably regretted, regretted showing up because folks were pretty animated there. But they ended up not opening that facility because people spoke up and rose up and were able to actually affect what happened on their street next door to their house or, or just in their neighborhood. And it was really amazing to me, you know, how motivated people were and how effective they were. And, and really sort of, you know, reminded me that people in small towns and in local government can really make a difference. So that's one of the best things of Los Alamos.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your service on the commission. Anybody that is on these commissions, I, I always tell people that, you know, we get all the meeting minutes, and some of them, like planning, is actually on TV. So when we are bored, we actually pay attention. So I, I do follow Pete and you, and yeah, you guys both do a great job. So I really appreciate it. And a big transition right now with the base and the swimming and the aquatics process, and I think you guys did a good job. What is your position on the fiscal responsibility and the budget surplus at this point?
Sure. My, my position is government should run just like a small business or family finances. You don't spend more money than you have. You save for the future, and the council has done that. You know, I think nine out of the last ten years, we've had a balanced budget. We've got surplus reserves. You know, apart from public safety, fiscal responsibility, I think, is the number-one job of local government and city representatives. You don't have the money to be spending on every shiny project that, that shows up or that's proposed. You have to be disciplined and take the long-term view, and that's really important. That doesn't mean saying no to everything that costs money. You have to be deliberative, really, really look into any projects or, or anything that's proposed. And sometimes you have to get really creative, too. I know the council's done that with Coyote Creek Park. And getting funding for the Rubber Eyes Playgrounds at Orville Lewis and Little Cottonwood. So, you know, you got to be creative, but, but really, you, you got to keep your eye on the bottom line and, and not spend more money than you have. So in my job, I deal with large budgeting issues regularly. I work for a big for-profit entity where, you know, if you're not making enough money or spending too much money, you go out of business. So I understand the complexities involved with budgeting. And, you know, I've managed teams and currently manage cases that are in the millions of dollars, sometimes tens of millions of dollars, where budgeting is, of course, critical, and I've had good success with that. So, you know, my experience in corporate America with a large Orange County employer and also my experience with our family's small business gives me a pretty good wide perspective on budgeting issues and financial responsibility that I think would be helpful to the council.
Thank you.
And Mark, what are your long-term strategies and ideas for the city?
So, you know, the, the council, I've mentioned this already, council and city staff have been doing a great job. I, I don't come to the city council with any sort of hidden agenda or, you know, any sort of axe to grind or anything like that. I come to help to, to, you know, make thoughtful, well-reasoned decisions on items that come before the city council. You know, the city council needs someone who, who could keep an open mind, can work well with others, analyze all the facts, is not stubborn, and would keep an open mind and, and keep in mind the long-term future of the, of the city. So that being said, you know, fiscal responsibility, keeping the balance, balanced budget would be one of my main goals. And second, one thing I think the city could benefit from is increased outreach. You know, I watch the city council meetings a lot of times if I can't make it on YouTube, and it, frankly, it makes me a little sad sometimes to see twelve or fifteen or thirty views of the city council meeting in a, in a city of eleven thousand five hundred people. So I think we can get more involvement and more participation. I know it's hard sometimes, but we have a wonderful city staff. We have a lot of venues nowadays to get people to buy into what the city council's doing because the city council's doing good things. But sometimes people only hear what the city council's doing by hearing about it on Next Door, and it's not always accurate, or by hearing gossip in your neighborhood, and that's not always accurate either. So I've got some ideas about increasing engagement with our citizens. I know a local city does. Walk with your councilmen where, you know, every Saturday or every other Saturday, whichever council members want to, want to go to a local park, we'll just walk around the park and interact with citizens and be accessible and visible and, and relatable. And, you know, the citizens can talk to them about whatever issues are on their mind and, you know, whatever concerns they have. So those are a couple of, of the ideas I have.
Right, thank you. Back to you, Richard.
Could, could you discuss, you've kind of touched on it in your opening comments, but what is the biggest problem and your solution here in the city?
So the biggest problem, if I had to pick one, it would probably be the pensions, the pension obligations. And I don't have a solution for that. But the way I would address that or the way I would, you know, deal with that is the way I deal with any problem in my life or in my career, is I would gather all the data and, you know, for, for any sort of decision to address the pension obligations. Gather all the data, talk to the experts in the area, talk to the people who are affected by any decision we're going to make, including our citizens. I would talk to people on the council, city staff as well. And I would make a decision that I feel is in the best interest of the city long-term. As it relates to pensions, tough decisions are going to be, need to be made. Somebody mentioned the, the sales tax. You know, I don't know, that wouldn't be my preference if that could be avoided, of course. You don't want to burden government, businesses, you don't want to burden our citizens with paying higher taxes if it can be avoided. But, but the problem is, you either need more revenue or you cut services, and neither's a good option. So I think, I think with that one, some more thought will need to be put in that, into that, into that area.
Thank you.
Sure.
So again, thanks for being here, Mark. So my question will be, have you ever run for a public office before? And if yes, what was the office and how many times have you run?
No, I have not.
Thank you.
Just to follow the mayor's lead, I guess, to be consistent on the two questions, I think you answered the sales tax question. You know, I, I'm very interested in the way, especially future council members, and when I'm on the other side and have to vote for people myself, you know, I want to make sure longer term, I'm trying to figure out what makes you guys tick and how would you deal with it? Because like you said, there is no magic bullet. You know, the situation that happened in two thousand nine, were you living in the city at that time?
I was not. No, I was living in Long Beach.
Okay. So I think with that, probably the only other, I guess, generic question I have is that, you know, we just lost a council member who was very bright, really kind of embodied what it would be to have somebody be on the council for the next twelve years. It would be something that, you know, I think a lot of people in the community got very excited about. And, you know, and again, I think for me, when I look at you with your background, your being a part of the commissions, you know, your job, anything that you're concerned about longer term professionally that could take you to a different location or, you know, I, I guess, and, you know, it's hard because I'm probably the worst person to be talking about this because I'm always pressed with business outside of the city. But, you know, I'm sure the community's also wondering, you know, here's a guy with not a super-long track record. How can we reassure the community that you're here to stay? And, and then I, I know the mayor will ask you the question about, are you going to continue in the next election? But you seem like a guy that's here for the long term, but I'm, I'm just curious.
I'm not going anywhere. My, you know, my, first of all, my wife's business is here in Los Alamos, and my family is about fifteen minutes away. Her family is fifteen minutes away. We're, we're sort of in the perfect spot here, and we're in a perfect city, at least for what we want to do, raising children, running a business. We are completely happy here, and there's no reason to ever leave Los Alamos. So I don't ever see that happening.
Okay, thank you.
And last question. The term is through December of next year, up for reelection in November of next year. Do you see any problem running for election next year?
I do not. I'm going, you know, if I were lucky enough to be appointed, I would learn a lot in the next year. So I never say never, but that would be the intention, of course.
Okay, great. Anything you want to close out with?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Dean Gross. Let you start with an opening statement.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you from this side of the, of the dais. And I appreciate the responsibility that you have. No one anticipated an early vacancy and, and we have to move on and do other things in the process to make decisions best for the city. I've been a resident of Los Alamos since nineteen eighty-six, when my business moved here from the city of Cerritos. My wife and I have been involved in the community with many of the nonprofits. She currently serves as a vice president on the board for Precious Life Shelter, which is a women's shelter here in Los Alamos. We both volunteer and financially support the Los Alamos Museum, St. Isidore's Historical Plaza, We Care Casa, Grateful Hearts, Precious Life, the Los Alamos Police Department or Police Association. And we strongly believe in supporting and giving back to our community. I belong to the Los Alamos Seal Beach Rotary Club. I have served as president of that club from two thousand seven to two thousand eight, and I've held most of the executive offices in the club. I'm a major donor for the Rotary Foundation, a benefactor, and I have fourteen years of perfect attendance. That's given me an opportunity to know other people in our community business-wise, and we have several members of city staff that over the years have been part of Rotary as well, and it's an outstanding organization. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for nearly two decades. I served on the Board of Directors. I was chair of Wings, Wheels and Rotors Expo from two thousand three until two thousand seven. Continue to support the efforts of, of the Chamber and our business community. I'm chairman of the Regional Military Affairs Committee at the Joint Forces Training Base, and I've been there since two thousand three. As a civilian committee, we've worked to assist the military in serving their mission to our country. As chairman, I've had the opportunity and pleasure to attend most of the changes of command that have occurred at the base, promotions, retirements, and unfortunately, hero missions when we welcome back soldiers who were killed in action. Just recently, we had half of the one fortieth, of the Fortieth Infantry Division deploy to Afghanistan. I was there to essentially wish them well. Godspeed as they got on the plane, and I hope to be there when they come back to thank them for the job well done. The other half of that division will be deploying probably in March or April of this year, and they'll be gone for a year as well. As part of that committee, I represent the Los Alamos Base at the California Governor's Military Council. I participate in bi-monthly teleconferences with military-based leaders throughout the state. This past September, I was requested to attend the State Military Forum in Sacramento, where I worked with the California Guard leaders and committee members to address, address some of the specific issues that have impacted the use of the Joint Forces Training Base for community events. With the appointment of an interim base commander, changes are being made that will help return these events, such as the race at the base and the Fourth of July. We're also hopeful to have Wings, Wheels and Rotors or a similar event occur. As a responsibility of that committee, I have conducted quarterly tours of the base, the fourteen hundred acres over there, again, since two thousand three. That's more than sixty tours for local residences, local residents, businesses and, and related individuals. We do have a lot that attend from Leisure World because they're held midday, and it's not always available for everybody that would like to attend. I've been a council member on two different terms. I was a hundred and eight votes short this last November from the standpoint of reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. What do you believe is Los Alamos's biggest issue?
Well, like one of our previous candidates here, I think there's about three different things that are probably significant to us. Traffic being one of those. The constant source of complaints from residences and businesses. There are ways to mitigate the impact of traffic. Just recently, the county has announced a border-to-border review and, and plan for Cotella Avenue to integrate the traffic signals from the east border to the six oh five freeway. That'll have an, have an impact and an increase in terms of traffic movement. There are other ways that I believe can be mitigated in the process. I've suggested some of those in the past, but not gotten traction on them. One of those was to take a look at what Long Beach does for early morning, late afternoon commutes, primarily places like Seventh Street, where they restrict parking from six in the morning until about nine, and again, from about four in the afternoon until about six. There's only a few spots along Cotella where that would have an, an impact for parking, but it might open up an additional lane that would help people move east and west more thoroughly in the process. Another issue is the ongoing impact of the public employee retirement and the mandates by state and federal government that impact us as a local city. The impacts from the public employee retirement system are things that are on everybody's list in every government agency in this state. There are efforts underway to find alternative sources where cities can opt out of perks. We're not there yet, but it is coming. There are other ways to offer retirement systems for the employees. I think that the city is on track to do some of those things. We've addressed them in terms of negotiations with employees, and I believe we have the policies and the plans in place to make sure that we meet our commitments to our retired employees. Developing a two-tier system for incoming and new employees helps from the standpoint that it changes the retirement age to something more reasonable from the standpoint of the people that are living longer and not retiring quite as soon. quite as soon. Third thing is to diversify our revenue sources for the city's budget and to prudently manage the expenses. I, I've made comment several times in the past, when a city has a McDonald's that's one of their top 25 sales tax producers, we know we have a problem. And some of our major sales tax producers in the city are industry-related and can be impacted. When we had the downswing of the economy in 2008, that did have a slight impact to us at that, at that particular point. So the more diversification we have from the standpoint of sales tax revenue coming in is going to be important. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you think are the best things about Los Alamitos?
Small-town feel. You get to know your neighbors. I think the ability to interact with the elected officials is, is important. While it doesn't seem like it occurs often enough, I know having served on the council and publishing my phone number and email, the phone calls and the, and the contacts by email do come in, and I think that's a responsibility of a local elected official to respond to those. We have a very strong public safety program with our fire and now with our local law enforcement, where they've developed a community command structure and designated four different sections of the community. Those guys are now meeting, guys and gals, are now meeting with the community in those areas, and I think that has nothing but positive nature in the future to interact because they begin to know the, the cops on the beat in their neighborhood. Our community-based recreational programs that provide athletic activities, events for our seniors, our after-school learning opportunities, Los Alamitos is a place to easily call home. Thank you.
Dean, thanks for applying, and again, I've served with you a couple of terms, so I appreciate everything you're doing in the community. And what is your position on fiscal responsibility and budget surplus?
Nearly five years ago, the council implemented a sound policy program to address the budget and surplus funds. This was when the city manager was hired. A minimum 25% of the annual operating budget was established as an emergency fund to provide for the unexpected. We know that's coming in one form or another. We've seen it from other areas of the state, from fires to floods to, to earthquakes. The policies were also put in place to partially address the public employee retirement system and those expenses. And as I said before, while those continue to increase in funds for those who have retired, the new two-tier system has been put in place to address an older age for retirement that still benefits the city workers. Prudent fiscal responsibility is part of the mandate to a local elected official. For me personally, I like assuming that I am the caretaker for these funds generated to operate our community in a safe and responsible manner. Ongoing requirements, including maintenance of the streets and facilities, must be maintained in a prudent manner. In my opinion, this was done on the replacement of police radios and dispatch equipment recently, where those funds that were expended are now being set aside to, to replace that equipment in 20 years. We've had similar situations with city vehicles. We're, we're now leasing the vehicles, which makes it easier on a pay-as-you-go basis, but we need to look at that. This must continue to be monitored because as councils change, funds being set aside do have the potential for redirection. It happens very frequently in Sacramento. So I think elected officials need to monitor that, monitor that, and recognize that those funds are for replacement of equipment, not for ongoing maintenance.
And what are your long-term strategies and ideas for the city?
It's important that those who are elected to serve our community are engaged in county-wide efforts to assure that the most economical approaches to day-to-day operations for our city match similar-sized municipalities. This oversight must be addressed, must address the methodology of doing business and those that are responsible to the council to carry out these policies. With recent improvements to Los Alamitos Boulevard, it is important that continued efforts be made to increase businesses in the area and to help, the, help meet the needs of our citizens and increase sales tax revenues. The pending development of Fairfield Marriott Hotel on the Boulevard will be one of those types of, of improvements. Working with mostly absentee landlords along the Boulevard, we must develop a way to engage in good dialogue with them and help them improve and survive in the future. We need to be aware of changes in demographics and technologies that will impact how brick-and-mortar business is conducted. Nothing will occur in a vacuum, but ongoing dialogue with stakeholders is important, in my belief. One of the candidates mentioned walking the neighborhoods, and I know several surrounding cities where council members do that, will pick a park and walk. We had a former council member here in Los Alamitos that used to walk every Saturday in one neighborhood, and it's, and it's a good method for reaching out to the citizens. It is unfortunate that we don't hear from them except when there's a problem. We are a city, excuse me, we're a city that enjoys many benefits, but not the least of which is our school system. Re-establishing communications as they face challenges in their operations is very important as we move forward. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to appear before you, answer questions, and I would appreciate your consideration for this important appointment.
Okay, Dean, what's the biggest problem in the city and a solution, if you have one?
The biggest problem, I think, is, is fiscal management from the standpoint of revenues that come in. We've seen more and more mandated programs come down from Sacramento. There was reference to the refuse, organic refuse things that are happening. I know those have been big items with a number of businesses. I don't think we have any one thing that's major from the standpoint of the business. We've discussed the fiscal issues from the standpoint of the public employee retirement system, and I think we've taken steps, or I believe the council's taken steps, to address that. Traffic, again, is an ongoing issue, and I think, as I said earlier, there are ways to mitigate that traffic. So I don't think there's anything critical that I'm aware of that's on the horizon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know, Dean, thank you for being here, that you had mentioned about having served before, but can you describe how many times you've run for public office? And has it been pretty much, has it been anywhere but the council? Has it been like a school board or some other elected office?
No. I was encouraged to run for the city council back in 2002 by the members of the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah. How many times have you submitted yourself to the process of, of running for the office?
2002, 2004, 2006, 2012. I've run for the Orange County GOP Central Committee in 2010 and was elected to that body, that represent, represented at that time, the 67th Assembly District, which was held by Jim Silva. And then I ran again in 2016 for the GOP Central Committee for the 72nd District and was elected on that time.
Okay, thank you.
Dean, so just the two questions I'd asked. So on the fiscal side of this, with the pensions, you know, we talked a little bit about that. I just want to know what your position would be on whether you would or would not support a sales tax initiative?
I don't think a sales tax initiative would be necessary to deal with that. I would be open to dialogue on it, but I'm not in favor of raising taxes.
Okay. And then your version, just from your perspective, for the 2009 issue. I had asked Mr. Carver Hall about that. Obviously, as we're going through this process, it's kind of interesting that you guys are both kind of colliding through this process at this point. You know, we got to hear Mr. Carver Hall and his perspective. What did you get out of that experience and how would we respond to the citizens if they were to ask us questions about that period of time and, and our ability to make a decision tonight?
I think it's an unfortunate situation that occurred, and as Mr. Carver Hall mentioned, probably on today's political climate, it may not have a, a similar impact. I had received an email from a extended family member. I sent that out to a few friends, and it was raised as a racial issue. I was personally attacked by that issue, not only locally, but nationally and internationally. I opted to resign as mayor at that time because I felt I couldn't continue, continue to represent the city council in a leadership role. I subsequently resigned from the council, the entire time from the day the article hit until the city council received my resignation. It was six days. In those six days, there were literally thousands of phone calls and emails focused. It was something that I nor anybody else that was on the council in that timeframe had ever dealt with. I met with the Orange County Human Relations Commission, spent some time with their director, trying to understand how people have reacted. Similar situations have occurred with a racial overtone since then. I've never had a racial issue. That was not what I saw from the standpoint of, of the original email. I recognized the sensitivity of it and, and I moved on. I have a great deal of, of friends who are of all ethnic backgrounds, and I don't have any similar-type feelings or complaints at this point. But thanks for...
Yeah, thanks, appreciate that.
And last question. This office is for, through December of 2018 with reelection in November 2018. Do you see anything that would prevent you from rerunning next year for this office?
No, I'm, I, the business closed in the end of 2014, so I'm currently looking for work, doing some consulting work on the side, and spending a lot of time with volunteer activities. In 2018, I mentioned in a cover letter to you that I think you might want to reconsider the one-year term versus the end of the term, simply because it's going to put four seats on the ballot in 2018. Two of you at least will be in that mix, which means there'll be two theoretically open seats. The top vote-getters, the first three will automatically get a four-year term. Third person, I'm sorry, the fourth person will get the two-year term. Cost in running an election and the efforts made in running elections for a two-year term is a little, a little bit different and a little bit steep. You also run the risk that one of the two of you who are incumbents could wind up with that two-year term. And, and I just want to make sure you kind of understand that. I know the hesitancy, because I was here at the discussion, the hesitancy of an appointment because when the appointment was made in 2009, the person ran for reelection and didn't get reelected. I understand that. Every election you serve or every election you stand on is a term limit because the voters can term you out. So I plan to run in 2018 regardless of what decision you might make this evening, but I would appreciate the consideration for the appointment and, and have you guys also just relook at the idea of, of an appointment for the three years rather than just simply a one-year term. We haven't heard from the fourth candidate yet, but the first three candidates or the first two candidates that I've listened to, I think you've got good quality of people. And where Mr. Edgar is concerned about his legacy and replacement in far as people coming up, I think the, the field is improving and there will be opportunities for other people in the community to continue to serve.
Thank you. Do you have any closing remarks?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations also to the other candidates.
And our final applicant is Greg Schellenberger.
Mayor, esteemed council members. I'm sure you, my name is Greg Schellenberger, by the way. Got that right, Warren. I don't know if you remember that from before, but I'm the great unknown, right? Everybody's like, who is this guy and where did he come from? Well, I've been a resident of Los Alamitos for nine and a half, almost 10 years, and my wife and I moved here from Fountain Valley because she's a graduate of Los Alamitos High School, and she wanted her kids to experience the same wonderful childhood that she had in coming here and with the school districts and the safety and all that good stuff that that happens. It was really important to her. Her parents, Dr. Ralph Ernest and Janet are to still live in the house that they purchased in 1970 over in College Park North, which is just down the street from where we live. Cheryl and I have been married since 1998, and we look forward to our 20-year anniversary next August. I've been a resident of California since 1991. I came here after I graduated from Texas State University in San Marcos, Texas with a business degree. Texas State, by the way, is the alma mater of President Lyndon Baines Johnson, in case you didn't know that, and country star George Strait. So those are important things. Anyway, within a month of me coming to Southern California, I was hired by AMC Theaters, and it's not a job I expected to last, but it's lasted 26 years. So I feel pretty good about that. Been employed my whole life. We, I, so I was hired in 1991, and by 1994, I was promoted to general manager, and I've operated businesses with revenues north of $20 million and all the responsibilities that go along with that. It's not just for teenagers, let's put it that way. My wife and I moved from Fountain Valley to Rossmore in 2003, and then we purchased our home in College Park North in 2008. Our three boys are in the Los Alamitos School District. Our oldest is a senior at Los Alm. He's going to graduate this year. Looks like he's looking to join the Navy when he gets out, so we'll see how that goes. I've adopted Los Alamitos as my hometown. I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere else in, for my life, and it's a, it's an environment that I think is great for kids, like all the other candidates have mentioned, and I think that it's a place that just, who wouldn't want to live here? From what I understand, I'm sure that you guys probably know Sunset Magazine rated it as number 12 on the Best Places to Live in the West. I think that's a great kudos for Los Alamitos. So it was wonderful. As far as the community goes, I've been involved in youth sports pretty much the whole time I've been here. I've assisted with AYSO in refereeing and coaching, and then I have also been an assistant coach for Los Alm Pop Warner. Spent a couple of years doing that, but my favorite thing to do is coach flag football for Los Alm F and L. It's a great experience that the, the people that you meet when you do that is just incredible. The people of Los Alamitos and Seal Beach and some Long Beach people that come in, they all have great attitudes. The kids are eager to learn. They have, they're fantastic. They have great respect for everyone, and the parents are very helpful. So that was a great experience for me, and win or lose, it's always, it's always that way. And then I was a candidate for Los Alamitos Unified School District and Board of Trustees in, in 2014, and I didn't win. But you know, one thing, we, a lot of the candidates talked about walking the, the neighborhoods. I did that. When I was a candidate, I'd never run for office before. I walked the streets, knocked on doors, handed out flyers, door-to-door, me and my wife, who's in the back there. She, she and I knocked on doors and talked to people, and the great stories that they tell you, the information that they give you about the needs that they want and expect are incredible, and that person-to-person experience is great. So I want to be a part of the city council to help shape the future of Los Alm. I've, I've lived in this community, like I said, longer than anywhere else I have lived. I tend to spend the rest of my days here. I know I have the ability to represent my fellow citizens in a positive manner and help the council make the sound decisions to maintain the great environment that exists in Los Alamitos. So I look forward to your questions.
Thank you.
And what do you believe is the biggest issue in Los Alamitos?
The biggest issue that I see, you know, as I drive around, is economic development. I think you drive down Los Alamitos Boulevard at Cotella, you've got two major buildings that are empty. The, the former Burger King for Vezza is, is empty. You've got the CVS building that's, that's empty. Hoff's Hut is now leaving in a couple of years or so to go to Seal Beach. It, it doesn't look good when you drive into the city off of the freeway from other places. and you see vacant buildings. The center where that restaurant is located, I'm not sure if Coliseum Antiques is still there or if they're gone, but it's not a very good-looking place. And I think that it's important, as we expect to grow the city and maintain safety and do the things that we want to do to keep the reputation of our city great, I think that we need to make sure that we do our best to develop those economic opportunities and try and help the landlords fill those places the best that we can and move that forward. There's a couple of other things I wrote down, too. I think homelessness has... Is beginning to become an issue in the area, not all over the city, but in the area that I live, College Park North, Ball Road, Bloomfield, right by the channel there. You get a few transients. Some of them are nice. The other day, when I was out on a run and there was a guy sleeping on the sidewalk. And you know, the concern that I think that we all should have about that is that, you know, the hepatitis A breakout that came from San Diego and is moving up to LA, you know, it's caused by people defecating and doing those things in public. And I think that's something we should look out. It's not a major problem yet, but something we should look out for. Traffic is another thing. I know that Dean Gross has a lot of information about parking and stuff like that, but one of the issues that I would say, and it comes from my experience of just observing what goes on, the intersection of Ball and Bloomfield, right behind my house, there's major accidents there on a regular basis. And that kind of safety is an issue where there's recurring problems that happen. And I know that part of it might be Cypress, part of it is Los Alamos, but it's something that we need to coordinate to make sure that we can stop that. And maybe it's just as easy as stopping the left turn on green and just making it a hard arrow. Only turn left on arrow, it might help because people accelerate down that hill and they try to make it. So those kinds of traffic issues, especially where we see recurring problems, I think there was a major one just the other day. I'm not sure what happened, but anyway, those are the problems I see, the economic development, homelessness and traffic.
Thank you.
Warren.
Thank you for being here, Greg. What do you think are the best things about Los Alamos?
The best thing is safety. Public safety here is incredible. Like I talked about running, I get up 5:00 AM, pitch black. There's no light out. And I run around the block and I feel safe. My wife walks her dog. She's safe walking it at night. And I think that that kind of environment is critical. You know, as a father, you want to choose the safest place that you can to raise your family and that's key. And as we recruit or draw people in from other areas who want to live here, as we try to sell those homes for those big prices, safety is a critical issue. And I think anything that we can do to support the police and the public safety and improve those systems is the best thing. Like other people have said, the small-town environment, I think, is good. But we have to be, I think, a little bit forward-thinking on our small-town environment. And you know, some of the strip malls and things are, you know, need to be redeveloped or I know that there's a lot of thought about strip malls and the retail environment going down with the internet sales. So there's opportunities for more service-type businesses in those malls, but I think that's something we should look at because I think all of Los Alamos district malls and the more empty spaces we have, the less traffic there is in those malls and then there might be more problems in the future. So I think safety in the small-town environment are definitely key.
Richard. It's very nice to meet you. I've been involved in a lot of different parts of the community, but this is the first time I've ever met you. So I welcome you for your engagement in the public process. I don't remember your run for the Board of Education, but yeah, I appreciate your involvement. What is your position on our fiscal responsibility and our current budget surplus?
You know, I believe that surpluses should be saved for rainy days. I don't think that... I think that there's always going to be surprises that come in the future. And it's hard, you can't plan for a surprise. It comes out of thin air sometimes. And I think that we have to be responsible in the way that we use the revenues that we do have. I think the more opportunity we can to increase those revenues through development, I think is the best way to go. If we do have to spend the money on the surplus, I think it should be ranked through life safety first. Anything that we can, if we have an issue at the time of a safety issue or the police officers need something that they should have, I think that's important. Quality of life, parks and community involvement is another place that some surpluses could be spent if it's really necessary, traffic and things like that. And then economic development or bringing businesses into the fold. But overall, I think it's very important for any city to provide for the community through safety, but also be very fiscally sound and not be whimsical with spending their money.
Great. Thank you.
And Greg, what are your long-term strategies or ideas for the city?
Boy, you know, I'm one of those guys that has pretty big ideas and sometimes they get in the way of me being... But you know, I would like to see us... I talk a lot about economic development and what I mean is growing revenue and growing the pot because we talk about expenses that are coming, whether it's pensions or rising salaries. I think salaries in the city are increasing all the time. And in order to continue that to happen, we have to increase the revenue growth, you know. I work in a for-profit company and we're talking about market share and revenue growth and making sure that we can pay for the things that we need to pay for. I think that goes hand-in-hand with city government to some extent. But I think that, you know, I would like to see us redevelop. I know that we don't have the land that Seal Beach had when they did the shops at Rossmore. You know, they had that shopping center, they ripped it down and rebuilt. I think that if we can afford it or find a way to have a private company that can come in and help redevelop some properties, you know, if we can find a way to take the chance to develop a walkable shopping center that has some new major retailers in it, that it might increase traffic, help some of these restaurants that have been going out of business, for whatever reason they're going out of business or wanting to leave after being here for so many years. Something's got to be done to increase that, to make people want to come back. You know, the young people of today like to be socialized. You know, they don't want the separate walk to your restaurant, walk to your car. They want to get out and walk around and visit with each other and see other people. And I think that's something that we should really look at. I don't know that it can happen. I don't have the answer and I don't have a checkbook that could afford that, but you know, it's what I see for long-term. In the short-term, fiscally responsible, take care of business and doing the things that we need to do.
Thank you. And back to you, Richard.
Thank you. What is the biggest problem you see here in the city and a possible solution?
Well, you know, before I came, I reviewed the city budget, you know, and it's what I do as a general manager for my theater. I review the budgets, I look at the expenses, where's our revenue coming from and what do we do? And it seems to me that on, I think the general fund is roughly $13 million in revenue, it hasn't really grown at that great a pace over the past four years. It's been pretty flat. I think, you know, property taxes are usually going to be fairly flat because it's property taxes. And then sales tax revenue, you know, has gone up, but you know, I know it's a sore subject, but it seems like salaries outpace some of the growth that we have. There's some departments that I looked at that make more, that have more in salary and benefits than they do in revenue that they are responsible for. I think that's an issue. I think that although we have a nice, sound, you know, balanced budget and everything looks good at the bottom line, I think that that's a problem that could become if we don't find a way to grow revenue, to cover those increases that those people are going to expect over the years, we might find ourselves in a problem.
Thank you.
Warren.
Thank you. Are you touched on this, Greg? Thank you for being here again. So you've run for a public office before and that was what year?
2014.
That was the only time you've run for a public office?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, so a couple of questions. You know, I want to start out a little bit, probably a little bit different than I would with the other three candidates because, you know, being on this council for so long, the thing that I noticed in a lot of your answers to your questions, and I want to tell you this upfront, so maybe you could kind of help change my mind through this process, is that, you know, for me, when people serve on a commission or they do work in the community as, you know, the nonprofits or whatever, or they run for city council, that process forces you to learn about the community, also to understand and appreciate the history, the businesses, the ones that are here, the ones that have made a difference. And then also kind of gives you a gauge, you know, a little bit of your comment on homelessness is kind of interesting. It's a next-door phenomenon, but you know, we've been talking through that here on the council. We've been, we have somebody specifically within our police force that focuses on it. So I think what I'm trying to get from you is a little bit more grinding of, you know, the election process would prepare you, I think, to understand the city a little bit closer, but it also prepares you to go out and see people in the community in the context of the city council, not the school board. And so some of the answers that I was struggling with when you were going through, like specifically, just to be consistent with my previous questions, you know, the pension obligation, it can manifest, you know, you heard Dean Gross and some of the folks talk about it and they kind of branch off into 14 different areas. But very specifically, on the financial side of this, you talked about, you know, economic development and you thought that it'd be good to have a developer come in and do something, but who pays for that from your perspective? Because this really is something that, you know, we've got to depend on the businesses to want to reinvest. And so from your view of this and your understanding of the development of a process or the economic development, give me a little bit clearer picture of your perspective, just so I understand your foundation and your frame of perspective.
Well, I think that scenario that I described with the walkable thing, it was a, it's kind of like a pie in the sky, long-term, what would I think? In reality, you know, we have the infrastructure that we have, you know, we can't just go out and change it. Like you said, who's going to pay for that? And then I think I referenced that a little bit in that I don't have the checkbook and I don't think the city does either. But it's something that maybe we could think about doing or keep on the back burner and if something does happen where something comes up, then fine. But I think that going forward and making sure that all of our storefronts are filled, I think, making sure that our shopping centers are pleasant to come to, you know, the one where Radio Shack left could use an uplift. I know some of them have been upgraded. So, you know, it's not like I think that we're just going to run around writing checks and spending money and doing that because that's not the way that I see it. That's not what I would ever do. But, you know, I think that first and foremost, we got to make sure that, you know, what are we going to do with the CVS? I mean, what is the landlord, I guess, going to do with the CVS? That's a better question. But where are we as a city to push his buttons a little bit, or he or her, whoever it is that owns that building, to say, "What are we going to do with it?" And I look at it and it looks like there's not parking to support a building that size, you know, obviously in that center. So in reference to some of your, you know, knowledge of the history and knowing people and being involved, you're right. You know, this is my first time, this is the second time I've talked in front of the council. The last time was during my school board election or campaign, anyway. It wasn't an election, I didn't win. But I think that I'm pretty in tune with the city as far as the history of things and how they go. Do I know the details of some of the guys who are on it all the time? Do I know as much as Dean Gross? Oh, there's no way. I could never, you know, maybe if I was on it for a few years, but I don't propose to be an expert on the inner workings of city government. I've never served, you're right. But I do know that I have a passion for Los Alamos. I want it to be the best city that it can be. And anything that I can do to help that out and be a part of, that's what I want to do. My family's going to live here. Like I said, I expect to die in my house. And I expect that it's going to continue to get better and I want to be a part of that. And I've somewhat tried to apply for commissions in the past, but it didn't happen or whatever. I've never come before for an interview for a commission before, but you know, it's not that I'm not interested. I'm very much interested. This is my home. You know, this is where I live and I think that I have ideas and the ability to help. And that's what I want to do.
Yeah, just to give you something, and again, I think I'm very encouraged by the fact that you put your name in. I mean, anybody that steps forward and steps into the line of fire, good for you and I really appreciate that. I think probably from my perspective, you know, it's the small things. And again, you may not hear it up here, but I wanted to tell you because, you know, I do see a really good background in what you're doing. I'm not where, and I know we're not taking a vote now, but I wanted to give you some constructive feedback so that if you don't get it tonight, that you continue. You know, the comment, just it's the small things, too, like the comment about the antique store, for example. The owner of that store is one of the biggest supporters of the POA Association. You didn't, you may or may not have known that, but you know, I'm sure that if the businesses were listening to your interview right now, they'd be going, "Did we just get somebody that really understands the business community, what kind of makes this community work?" It's those small details that you learn through an election process because you're forced to go out and talk to the people, the citizens, most importantly. And this isn't a patronizing scenario. I've just, I really want to help you. I want good people for the city. I think you're a good person. I just think that this appointment process that we're going through, I think where your colleagues may have an advantage a little bit is they understand where we're at and that we know that, you know, right now, we're trying to maintain our momentum. And if you don't make it tonight, I would encourage you and reach out to any one of us, too. We'd always like to help you or anybody else in the city that has an interest in furthering our community.
Well, you know, I in no way was trying to be derogatory towards any business that exists. You know, that wasn't my point. My point is that we spent money on the beautification process for the Boulevard, which is great. We should keep that going forward and seeing what is out there as far as making all the areas. Because I know that the nicer shopping centers look and the nicer that things are, more people are willing to go there. And the ease of egress in and out is important for that. But you know, I support the city 100% and I appreciate your comments. It means a lot to me.
Yeah, thank you. And again, thank you for your time, too. Thank you.
So Greg, you've heard this three other times. So this position is through December of 2018 next year with reelection in November of 2018. Are you willing to rerun for reelection next year?
Yes, I would, absolutely.
Okay. Do you have any closing comments or statements or anything?
No, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll bring it up here.
We didn't make opening comments, but I would just like to thank everybody who applied tonight. This isn't going to be any fun for anybody. You know, mathematically, three of the four people who are here are going to be disappointed tonight. Also means we have three good candidates for 2018. That's not going to help anybody when they walk out today, though. But thank you so much for coming here. I often say when we have the commissioners who want to volunteer, it's the hardest thing we do. This is that times 10 in making this choice. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and echo those sentiments. Thank you all for submitting yourself to the process and I do want to thank my colleagues for this because the other time in my memory this happened, it was rather painful and it was a very, very difficult decision because the process that then council used, they offered up to two candidates and it was tough because as Councilmember Murphy said, we only got to choose one and we only get to choose one here, they only got to choose one. And it was certainly, watching it from the audience, it was certainly difficult. I understand the gravity of that. And with that said, I guess I'll, you know, part of my questioning, the optional question is, I think that those of you that have submitted yourself to the process, however successful or unsuccessful you are, you do understand a little bit about this. And so to me, that counts for something. So, you know, we're looking at appointing somebody for the remainder of this term. And I would really kind of give strong, you know, encouragement to my colleagues here is that we look at someone who's experienced to be that caretaker till the end of the term. And then I see four great candidates out there for rerunning in next year and I think, I don't, I think Mr. Gross had pointed out, I'm willing to subject myself to up against the four of you because this is really what Mayor Pro Tem Edgar said at our last meeting. Let's let the voters decide because I see four great candidates and, you know, we, up here, we are lucky because we were appointed last time because of, there were only three of us running, so... But in the 2010 election, which I ran, that of us running, so, but in the 2010 election, which I ran, that was very, very difficult, and Pete remembers that. It was ugly, it was mean, it was nasty, and then look at us here today. If you'd asked me then if we could get to this point, I thought never in a million years, never, but here we are. We've got four great candidates. It's going to be a tough choice, and I'd like to hear what my colleagues say. Thank you.
Yeah, I said it on the last candidate, I'd say it again. I am very appreciative of the candidates coming forward. It, you know, I wasn't sure what to expect, you know, we kind of said, hey, let's go ahead and open this thing up, and let's see how many we get, and I'm thinking, ooh, this is going to be a long process. It came together fairly quickly, so I'd also want to thank the mayor for jumping on this right after. I know you and Wendy were working to get the questions out, get the process in place, so Wendy, I just wanted to thank you, too. I know this is not the favorite time for you. You know, I would also say, going through, you know, like I said, I would echo what everybody's saying, is that, you know, I've looked at this very specifically as a placeholder scenario that definitely is somebody that would be able to get in and help us get to whatever the next election is. I would also say I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, we do have four people, you know, if you look at it kind of catastrophically, it could really change the balance of the community and could change the balance of the way that it, we finally got to here. You know, Warren talks about the previous elections, and Warren and I haven't always been working well until a couple of years ago. And you know, it's interesting is that at our core, we're very similar guys, USC MBA or USC people, we've got aerospace background, but we couldn't have been more at each other in the beginning. And it took the dynamics of a balanced council and steady hands and really people that kept getting their fingers in the business of the relationships up here to just step back and let this council kind of do what it needed to do and find its way. And so this is a decision that I know that we all up here take very seriously. I really don't want to affect the chemistry of something that really seems to work. And for those in the, that I ask the hard questions or a little bit more direct, I'm really just trying to make sure that we can get to the end of this next election. So with that, Mayor, again, I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to getting through this. Thank you.
And I'll echo a lot of the comments. I appreciate anybody that comes out here and wants to serve our community, whether it's in volunteering at Winter Wonderland or being on one of our commissions or sitting on city council. You put yourself out there, and you're open for a lot. So I just appreciate just the interest that we have here. We have four amazing candidates. That makes the decision even harder on the term of the decision to go the one year versus the end of the existing term, which is 2020. Mayor Protem Edgar made a real good point at our last meeting. It is our job up here to fill in the gap until the voters can have their say. And that's putting me out there, and that's putting Warren out there, and anybody else who's up for reelection, and it's a chance we have to take, but it is up to the voters to decide who are the five that are going to be up here at any given opportunity. So I'm comfortable with it being for the one-year term, unless we have any other discussion on that. So in front of us, we have an indication of support that we can start with the first step. We can fill that out and hand that to the city clerk, and then she can read off.
Okay, we have two indications of support for Mark Turco, one indication of support for Dean Gross, and one indication of support for Pete Carpehal. And then we will need a motion and a second and a roll call vote to make the appointment efficient.
Okay. Do I have the motion, or do we need further discussion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion for Mark Turco.
I'll second.
Second. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Congratulations, Mark Turco.
Thank you, ma'am.
And at this point, the city clerk is going to take over and run the show.
Mr. Turco, if I can have you join me at the podium.
2080. So it sounds like.
Sounds good. Please raise your hand and repeat after me.
I'm Mark Turco. I am Mark Turco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd like to present you with the certificate of appointments. And then we save your words if you'd like.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
And also, Mark Turco, if you can join us up here and...
Okay, thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned until Monday, December 24th, Los Alamos Council.